As I said, we have students from Washington Elementary here tonight. And they are gonna tell you a little bit about themselves. And I'm not sure that they can use microphones right, but we can talk loud. I think they can talk loud. I've been meeting with them for past fifteen or twenty minutes. I don't think they'll have problems tonight. But I do want to thank their principal. Dr. Bridges is here. And I think there's some of their teachers. They're not excited as we walked in. And they're going to tell you their name, what grade they're in, who came with them. And then they're also gonna tell you, they told me some really good things about Washington Elementary tonight. So they're gonna, they're gonna tell you some of those things too. So we're gonna start with Jasmine.
Hello, my name is Jasmine Medina. I'm in fifth grade. And my mom and my dad came with me today. And my favorite thing about Washington Elementary is that there's so many good teachers here.
Hi, my name's Savannah Harrington. My mom and dad came with me. I'm in fourth grade. And my favorite thing about school is how the teachers never give up on you.
My name is Kayvon Bonner. My mom came to watch me. My favorite thing about school is math and reading.
My name is Wimmy Washington. I am in second grade. My mom, my cousins, and my sister. My favorite thing about school is Mrs. Ice Kids.
I'm Charlie Bolton.
What grade?
First grade.
I can't, I can't hear this stuff.
My mom and my brother.
Is it too loud for you?
Nope.
Okay. Oh, okay, that's all right. So what is it you like about school?
I like the computer lab.
You like the computer lab? Why would you like the computer lab?
Because they can play games.
Games, the Tiki thing, so rock and roll. Okay, so we didn't know what it was. Okay.
Hello, my name is Mena Parsons. I'm in kindergarten. My favorite thing about school is the iPods.
Say that again, say it one more time. What is it?
My name is Mena.
What was your favorite thing?
The iPods.
The iPods. And why do you like to use the iPods?
Because you can play like you like, right?
Is there anything else anyone wants to say about Washington?
Nope.
Okay, let's pass it back down there. You got it.
Okay.
Thank you.
That this school, they really never give up on you. They make sure you have the education you need. They make you ready for every grade that you're about to step into. And that Washington's the perfect school.
All right, Mr. Booker has something for you. And Metta, who came with you tonight?
Uh, my teacher and my mom.
Okay, we are good, thank you. All right, let's give them all a hand.
Next section is devoted to public participation. And tonight, we have one gentleman to speak with us, Mr. Loody Wilkie. Mr. Wilkie, we welcome you.
Thank you, Dr. Hemrick. I am here on behalf of Shelby American Legion Post 82. Thank you for affording us this honor. I know some of you have been involved for years with the American Legion. My old friend Jerry Hoyle, I think probably grew up in it. His father was so active there. As you know, that we, every year, we have started reviving our oratorical contents. We had this point for quite a while, back in the 1960s. One of my, it was a year behind me, Billy Davis won it and went on to the regional championships. He later made a career of the Air Force, getting a bachelor's degree in meteorology and a master's in mathematics. He achieved the rank of Colonel in the Air Force and was at the Pentagon on 9/11. He since has retired. These are the caliber of people we have participating. Last year, the winner of our local contest was Gary Bell, who was a student at Shelby High. And he went on to win the district championship. I mentioned this contest has been revised, revived a little bit. For many years, Mr. E.B. Clayton, one of our distinguished county educators, headed it up. Of course, he passed away, but we have since revived it. And we want your students to participate in it. I have given out some information packets. They were a little slow this year getting them to be in the mail, but I got some of the information off of the internet. And I will get more information to you as time comes. We do ask that you send the packets directly to the principals. They would, they can have either a little school contest or have the teachers pick out somebody. One from each school and send them to our contest, tentatively set for January 10th, Saturday, in the fellowship hall of the Lutheran Church, where it has been the last two times. As I mentioned, we have had a district champion come out of Cleveland County Schools last year. I want to challenge you to send us a state or national champion. I believe you have the caliber of students to do it. I've heard them participate in the contest, so why are we waiting?
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. The lead, Dr. Fisher.
Yes, Dr. Hemrick. We have a draft teacher contract that can be used for authority ending dates. This changes in our contract and needs your approval as well as the president.
We need to take each one and separate. I'd like to make a motion. We will separate all of this cross-theater issues. I'd like to make that motion right now to separate all of this cross-theaters. Thank you, Ms. Blanton. How would you want to separate?
As far as this draft, hiring, all, any action done on personnel, I'd like to make separate.
And then all of your information being seconded together.
Right, in other words, the personnel, all of them, put together as far as the hiring. We just separate like transfers, personnel, hiring, this contract. I'd like for it to be separated. It's like I've asked two or three times, Paul, I'd like to make that motion.
All right, now here's a second. There's a motion, second on the floor, that we separate. I invite everybody to look at the personnel section, which is divided into, let's go by numbers on this, make sure. If I'm understanding correctly, Ms. Blanton, you want to separate number one, number two, lump them together. Is that, you do not want to do?
No. Everything on personnel, anything that we have acting on, we have to separate. That is a different thing.
Okay, so you want one to be one, two to be separate, and then the other three are next to, or authority information. Can we lump them?
We lump, lump them, that'd be sufficient therapy, because it's not really a board action. But it does mean that we're voting on it and approving what's later, so it's not really an action. I, so we can lump those two together. That'd be three and four.
I'm confused, because since it's not an action, I don't think.
No, number three, number three.
You would need to approve, approve section one, section two, substitutes, and the contract. Separate them all. Section three and four, you know, there's still more information on that.
So you want to lump the contract in this whole thing or?
Yeah, but we're gonna have to separate it. I have four of them there, like.
Now, two weeks ago, there's a section five that was an action.
That was a section?
Not those, not what? What was section five doing?
Promotions.
Promotions.
They're learning.
It is, right, but doesn't act, cut out.
Any action. Well, I'm, but now, any personnel action, I, we do accept instead of putting them together.
All right. I have some big questions, so I'll explain to everybody. Any discussion?
I guess I have one. It is, what's the reason behind that, Mr. Blake?
The reason behind that, but there are some things here that a person might want to vote on and some that he, that he would want to vote on. And if they're all together, you're, you're voting on something that you might want to vote for. And you're, you know, because if I set my mind on something that I'm gonna vote against, but I'm gonna vote against, and then I put down everything, then some of those things I might want to vote for.
But I guess my question would be, like, in section one, there's probably, I'm just looking at it, probably fifteen to twenty personnel actions on that, is that correct?
That's right.
If you had a problem with one of those and you voted against that, that would also show that you were against it.
I voted on every one of them separately and all twenty-nine.
Well, I'm just asking my question, and I mean, that's what I'm saying.
I was trying to break it down a little bit, but we, I'm just saying, we're voting on all twenty-nine of them individually.
We already have a motion on the floor.
I'm willing to accept that as a whole, and if I want to vote against or if I want to vote for, or anybody else, if this issue's come up on several different occasions, but there's still.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, I think Mr. Glover's question is very valid. I guess the reason why I think it's okay to vote on separate actions, why, just for clarification, more clarity, as far as information we are providing. And I'm buying the particular motion, anything, in separating just actional items.
Any other discussion?
Yes, sir, Mr. Blake. I have a little concern about breaking the personnel things part, because it's, this board's, that it's rolled is to approve or disapprove, normally to approve what the superintendent tells us, gives us. I don't have personal knowledge of each of these candidates. I've not read their applications. I've not read their recommendations. I've not read their evaluations. I feel very inadequate to talk about one of these candidates without having done all the homework. I just don't feel that, and that's something I certainly am not looking to do, to sit down and go through and review all the pros and cons of each and every one of these twenty-some people in this first category. The life, the, certainly, people, the teachers, and the bus drivers, the custodians. I really can't say I won't vote for this one or that one without looking at each one of them individually. I have to trust the superintendent and the principals that have made these recommendations, that they have done their homework, that they have looked at these people, they've interviewed these people. I haven't. So I, you know, the question is basically is a matter of trusting that the superintendent and our staff has done the job. I have to, I think you have to vote above or you have to, if you're serious, that I'll look at replacing those people that you're, that are in charge of hiring. But I certainly have not followed by the great things they've changed.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I, Mr. Blake, I, if, I'm looking at the list. I did interview, I didn't see any information on them. Ten people could have applied for one job, or fifty people, or one, whatever. I got two principals out here, and I have to trust that when you make a recommendation to the superintendent that you feel that you hired the best person for the job. And I think that's, when you bring that to our superintendent, he brings it to us. It's up to us to trust that everyone's done their job, not just Dr. Fisher and Ms. Walker and her staff, but also our principals and I.
I agree to an extent. And I, very quickly will say, don't, don't get me wrong. I do think we have very qualified people in the place, and I support them 100%. And I feel like if, if I take it that way, you know, why isn't all just information? You know what I mean? Like, there, it's an actionable item, and we have to vote on it anyway. The reason why I say that is because, you know, narrowing it down, making it more efficient, in my opinion, is really no different than what we're doing in the first place. We're just clarifying which particular, particular actionable items that we're voting for. Now, that doesn't mean that I have, I lack confidence in our system or anything, but I just want to clarify that on my part. But, you know, I'm finding it a way. I just, that's why I say that in motion, because I do think it can be more efficient for what we do business.
I guess I see it kind of opposite, that it's more efficient to vote on the personnel report. I agree with what they've said, that our job is not to vote on each person that the school system hires. We vote on one person, and that's the superintendent. And then we vote to approve or disapprove the personnel report. We have this for, as Dr. Hemrick said, a couple, excuse me, almost leave ahead of time, that there are individuals that are either being recommended for employment or they're leaves that are recommended for a leave of absence. If there's an individual that you have a question about or a problem with, you can talk to Dr. Fisher and find out some of the reasons behind that. If you have questions for any, that's the way I see our role as, as board members to get those answers ahead of time, so that you can come to this meeting prepared to either vote or disapprove. And so I don't see the purpose in separating these items.
Well, Ms. Blanton, if anybody else wants to speak, they've got the opportunity to speak first. Then I think we'll go to you, Ms. Blanton.
Mr. Chair, if you think it is, it asks the question of the legal and creditability of the process that we have.
Ms. Blanton?
Well, I brought one issue to the table on several different occasions. And I'm still not satisfied, and that's the reason I would get separated and not vote against everything, because there are one person here that I have brought for this whole board. We dropped a ball on this person. Not this person, and I don't discredit anybody, Dr. Fisher or anybody's stomach, but we dropped a ball on a person here that sent this personnel report. And we put an ending date that I'm not a bit satisfied with under those circumstances, because she shouldn't have been hired four years ago.
Thank you for your comment, Ms. Blanton. Thank you, everybody. All in favor of Ms. Blanton's motion? Say aye.
Aye. Separate the person.
All opposed?
No.
I believe that page had. Thank you. Do I hear another motion?
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
For that? Because I think that that motion, the contract got locked in there with the personnel.
No, they're two separate things.
Okay, that's why I wanted to ensure, okay, because that's the way I see it, it's two separate, okay?
That's why I have a question.
Okay.
There's approval for the contract. As far as approval, they're two separate things.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the teacher contract we fixed in and done.
No, no.
Draft.
Okay, you just want to go with the draft contract?
For right now.
For right now. Make a motion to approve that contract.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the draft contract. Any discussion?
I vote yes. I vote against the contract, because this employee is getting an ending contract date, and she shouldn't be getting nothing.
I'm getting what? No, no, I mean, I'm not asking for a vote, it's a discussion. And I think Ms. Blanton was discussing it in the form that we made that, I think that's the way that he was expressing his feelings. I would like to ask a question of Dr. Fisher. What occasions or what would occasion a, a ending contract or a fixed contract? What's the proper term?
Well, it is, it's changed, because we do want to be more efficient and working with our terms to make sure that we have the proper language here moving forward, that we position our school system, our employees in that shape. Basically, with this contract, if an employee work less than required on a day, is a school year qualified for a new contract. If they're a part-time employee, if they're in a non-permanent position, that means they're hired, that's what you call soft funds. It's funds that may not be back every year, but if they're a retired person, they will bring it back. And if they're, if a contract, this, this positions, this contract is one of our, sort of our terms on positions our school system to be more efficient and to serve our folks better than what we have in class. So, you know, as a result of some of the discussions we've had, we have worked with our terms to update this contract.
Dr. Fisher, excuse me, just here. Can you just clarify, under soft funds, would you, is that like pre-cake money?
Could it be pre-cake money, it could be title for money, those funds, excuse me, that you don't, you may like money of the week, you know, it's, it's effective, but the term is, it's used a type of soft ones, that you, you're not guaranteed to get it next year, this is, it just protects the school system as well as the employee.
Right, okay, thank you.
I think what Dr. Fisher has done here is correct. And it fits what's happened to this particular person that I'm talking about in the future, that that didn't happen to me. So it's not that I'm against, against that contract, but I am due, that she, that she's gonna be involved in this contract too. And, and, and she's in a position, that we put her in that position. She didn't put herself in that position. And that's the reason I'm voting. But I think his contract, what he's doing, he's going, he's trying to fix where this will never happen again. But that's not, that's not right that that person, that's where, that's where I'm reaching to.
That, that's your being, right?
And I think he will agree with me. Dr. Fisher will agree with me on that to a certain, to a certain degree. And that's the reason he's doing what he's doing in this one or two. They're doing this contract, but she's, she's gonna be plugged right in this contract if we vote, if it passes to go, that.
Any other discussion?
Right now, we're just voting on this draft contract. We're not voting on any people with this, just this contract.
Yeah, but that person's gonna be involved in this contract.
But this contract's not just for that one person. This is for any future employees that are hired for the ending date.
And this contract makes it very clear that what, what, what these, what the contract is between the employee and the school system, that there is an ending date and why there is an ending date.
And it also clarifies the reason why you would use the contract ending date. And I think that's the important part of this contract, is it's just not a contract with an ending date. It clarifies the reason, making sure that there's a reason that we would use one, is an appropriate reason, something that protects the school system, the employee, the student, the law.
Right, if I was, if I was a teacher being hired, I would clearly know that my date is ending and why I was hired that way.
But in the past, we have had our, we have our people with an ending date contract, have we not? So this is not a new method. There are some tweaking, there's some tweaking, but that's it.
That's correct. We've just, we've always hired people with endings. However, this contract makes it, perhaps around why you were hired with an end date, or I was hired with an end date, we might have different people hired for an end date for different reasons. So it clarifies that, so that we can handle those situations more effectively and efficiently.
And that's what I wanted to call the work of the team on. It's clear, it's effective. It's not general, back to what I was saying earlier, it's getting down to the specifics, which is what I was talking about in the last, I'll let them do. But it gets down to making us more efficient in the sense, you know, that we can get to the bottom of it and protect us. And that's why I called, that's what I called this on that.
Any other? If not, we have a motion on the floor, all in favor of the motion to approve the ending contract? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Now, on to the personnel report actions. Mr. Blake, you want that? What's the latest report?
Moved to approve the personnel report as recommended.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the personnel report as recommended. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Thank you. On to 21st Century Systems now, Mr. Blake. I believe you've got quite a bit of agenda to deal with.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Members of the board. Dr. Fisher, we have a twenty-year, did you file a resolution in 2014, 15 school year? Well, we'll tell you about this resolution, because that nicely put the resolution to adopt it at the end of April, as a budget, as a question to the county commissioners. It was really 1% change overall, so basically, we're looking at, what you look at in April, we could approve the request to the county commissioners. The other thing I want to add to you is that originally, we built $4.8 million fund balance into the original request in April. And we built along with that a request for additional funding for the commissioners. That did not materialize, so in fact, you have a $7 million dollar fund balance appropriated in this five year resolution just before. If the actual question is, if we have a budget by this month, the question is, man.
I just want to make sure I understand, so we're removing seven something million dollars of our fund balance into our.
It is a blocking screen, this, this quality.
Is that still a link, I don't think, on balance, in case we have any emergencies?
Do you have any question?
I'm just curious that, you know, it's something line items, others, like presidential, going to those presidential. I'm just curious to look at the line items, but I know that we can modify it for this. There was, there was some pricing there. What's the rest of that?
There were years. The line items were, a lot of it was on the line items and.
Oh, sorry. Can you hear me?
I can.
I stand corrected, I'm so sorry.
See, there was a lot of revenue, it was, I saw it in a couple line items, I guess I.
Section 14, page 14.
I need a couple of notes, and that would just, a lot of revenue, section 14.
I think we don't have any lottery money.
Yeah, that's what I'm just curious. Lottery funds for the past several, couple of years, Mr. Blake, have been used as debt retirement. By statute, lottery funds have to come to the school hall. By statute, lottery funds have to come to the school all the same, and lottery funds have to come to the schools as capital outlay. But it can also be used to pay off debt with buildings that you have. And that's what schools now like now, they're paying for bonds, general aviation bonds that they have in Shelby School, if you didn't have, but it's being used. Land's capital is being used for those projects, and that's the debt on the accounts.
And I saw a similar line, this line item, which I think I need to raise in the... What was the, those monies that we got, I forgot what you call them. We got the last couple of years and went away this year.
Stevie was funny.
Yeah, I heard, what's it mean?
That it has all gone away.
I just ain't, I see that in the line items, same, just see that.
Any other questions? All in favor of the motion on the floor? Say aye.
Aye.
I thought we had. We have? Anybody here a motion?
I just asked a question. I made a motion to be approved, 2014-15 budget request.
Second. Any further discussion? I have to be careful, we are not discussing more than we make a motion. You mind this follows? Yes, sir.
It's nothing to Mr. Lee on this, but I think we need to, if Mr. Garper allowed on our money, on our new construction, on this auditoriums and more Shelby School, we need to really be talking on that as soon as possible.
Thank you, I'm sure that needs to be regarded.
One thing, Mr. Chairman, ROTC money, there's nothing there. What was the deal with the ROTC, there was none in there, or?
It's a reimbursement, it's a relaxation. They don't cover the cost of the ROTC officers that they have out there, but they, to a partial point, we, we spent to make it what our active expenses turn out to be. They're, they're partial fund, they do not count.
All right, thank you.
Agreed, no further discussion. All in favor of the motion now on the floor? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, passage of the members. On to the Dixie Hughes Gooden contract explanation.
Mr. Chairman, I cannot apologize for bringing this contract too late, but if you never see it over, I got it by September, it's a risk that, you know, you got what I got as soon as I got there. In defense of what's going on with this process, this is a grand audit that have to do with calls of changes and find a little bit of intensive disclosure, and be part of the state's budget. This has to be done. We were lucky, lucky by the way, we were selected as the candidates or part of the group that is the initial audit process, ultimately, all consistent to the subject to this audit, consistent with first group in there. And that's part of the real problem that we got, to say treasure, and I'll lead to it. And while we still live in the U.S. contract, we would apply a technical engagement. Later contract officers should be using the test in case we need to complete the work request. And by the way, say, however, however, after further consideration, we decided to not produce a technical engagement later contract. It would take time for us to develop such a document and get the necessary signs. Since the engagement agreement should be a much broader, more complicated plan, we do not want to hold up a process from that, go through the proof process, particularly on our... So, that passes well. Massively dollars have a lot of property, which not very well from the county officers that requested discussion about it, the building city, and a lot of that. So, everybody's been pushed back with this process, and that's the reason, like I think, most of us like, that's the reason, unfortunately, we're not reading that contract to you. Again, this requirement on the state revenue office, it was made clear.
No words, it's mandated, but no funding for it.
Correct, that's true.
Would it have made any difference if they had, if funding required, if they had done a technical?
No, it would have made any difference. Probably, like everything else, though, probably go through this first year, learn to face others. Here's a more, more efficient, more effective next year, it probably will cost you less bill for it than it's costing us, not that it costs. Your honor.
Do you have any questions to approve the contract? It was a pleasure, Paul.
I can motion to approve the contract with Dixie Hughes living to offer this census now from this state treasure.
Second. It's been moved and seconded, as well as playing down this office. Discussion?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
What it may have, maybe we have done a little better audit on our original audit with state, with state jumped in on us being first.
This has nothing to do with...
Our original state audits.
Everybody's going through, I'm sorry, everybody's going through this process is a second audit in addition to the regular audit. And the school system, its airports, libraries, its cities, its facilities, well, a part of the government. It's, it's everybody, everybody's seen it, we were teaching, we opened up the time system.
But don't we have, they hired Venus on our audit that we're paying a month's sum?
We did have empowered, as our office, they are doing, this order, and then the contract goes from the, that's clear, that there's a second contract, a very specific source of, 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 of.
Well, you know, we actually do something, you don't get extra pay for it. And our teachers do a whole lot, and our principals work 24 hours a day, and they don't get extra pay.
I see.
I think we need to pay that on it, telling people we can put it out for Venus. Somebody else, can we do that?
You can. We're past we can put it off every seven day.
When did we get this letter?
That our first, our first year.
Thursday, and it's got to be done by October the seventh. And we need to file for extension, and if we do things right, we're getting Venus on God's.
I'll do it for the last one.
We have the motion on the floor, I, I respectfully, it's a thing that didn't waste state government workers.
Well, somebody got to give it, we need number one.
Maybe you ought to visit Representative Moore and Senator Daniel Littell about this. Last minute, you know, big dictum, big dictum.
I'll do that tomorrow.
And I think, I think Mr. Lee, remember, Mr. Chairman, I'll tell for another, but I do think we can also send a mail, and it's a pleasure, and the main thing, it involves, it's like we had a board meeting, we had one board meeting in September, you know, we're at, we're at time for us, but it poured down. We got, we got a bill there, so, I mean, we can also, for our displeasure, with the time of this process, we are up against, you know, the, the, the state treasurer and their, their, and, and, and...
And they're not giving us no set fee here, any ten to twelve thousand dollars for Austin. They ought to come back and say twenty, they ought to come back here and eat twenty. That pay for a teacher's sister.
I think everybody, they're just pretty good, Dixon Hughes, Gooden, I think they were a little bit in the contract. They had a little bit of the contract, but again, this is not, that they've not done in the past, and they don't clarify, very hard to clarify who the state treasurer, exactly what they're supposed to do, what they're going to have this in place. So, they're very thin, they're western, sort of standard, but they obviously see the state treasury office, that's not given to account, it's more of this, here's all the one, here's the one, it was locked up at seventeen.
And this will be, have an audit that we'll have to do every year?
Yeah. Often, we do, often what I said is that every unit in the state will eventually have the same audit, but we won't be audited every year at Austin. Now, going forward, it may well be a, so, there may be, there may be a whole way into our audit. It would not be a separate audit, this is what I hear, it's, it's...
You're looking at the last four weeks that you had done in Mariner.
That's one we need to approve it tonight, so that they can get started as soon as possible.
Let me see, like, if this is right, if this is basically an audit of census. So, they're, they're actually, all they're checking is, are we, who have we properly reported all the people that's supposed to be in the retirement system? If we're withholding the money that was supposed to be holding from their checks, they sent it down to RALI, the retirement system. So, they're somehow will come in and check to see, as far as they can tell, whether we're withholding the right, we're taking retirement of this everybody we should, and send the money down to RALI, but they haven't been moved there, RALI's actually wanting to have that reported.
Yeah, it's, I guess, we would give the best explanation, but, but the reason for it is, is based on the century sixty-seven, and the mine experience technical is a year, that's five different plants,